Actually, we're all shut off here. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome you all here today in person, and if there's anyone joining us via Zoom. And first on our agenda today is Jayden Chekel, our Assistant Jackson County Engineer. Good morning, Jayden. Good morning.
So, first thing on the agenda, the only thing on the agenda is to award a proposal for the Monmouth oh-one thirty-eight design, which also known as the Channelworth Bridge, and this is the bridge that we also got that two million dollars from the DOT towards. Uh, so since this bridge was out of our wheelhouse for design, we went out for proposals for it. Uh, since those back in August, received them back early September and reviewed them and had some clarifications on some things, and they finally, we got everything clarified and had them send us back the revised proposals and uh, based on that, I mean, it's apples to apples, everything what they give us stating what they're going to do uh, is, I mean, pretty much identical. Uh, I can go through some of it here. They're gonna do the I topographic and hydraulic survey, there's a preliminary design. Uh, since this bridge is also likely to be considered historic or eligible for register on the National Historic, National Register of Historic Places. There would have to be the feasibility report done with that, which if you're familiar, like the city of Monmouth Bridge is also that Eastland Bridge that's closed is also going, would have to go through that same process. So this bridge would also likely fall into that, so we had them include that. Uh, and then there's final design, post-letting services, and then the geotechnical services, which are soil borings, uh. So we got the prices back from Origin Design and Calvin Burns, and there was quite a bit of cost difference between the two. Um, but after reviewing, I mean, they all, it's not like anybody, it's not like either one of them was missing something or understood things differently than what we were asking. Uh, but Origin Design price was, like I said, quite a bit different. Uh, I'll kind of go with for final design, we had them list us two options for final design, one using what we call the H thirty standards, which are just it's a DOT standard bridge with just adding multiple spans since it's a four hundred existing, it's like a four hundred and sixty-foot-long bridge, and maybe it needs to be a little bit longer, maybe it doesn't. But, uh, using that standard, just adding additional spans to achieve that length. Or we also had them provide us a custom design, which allows for longer span, using different beams to allow for a longer span to span that channel, which would equate to like less peers in the channel. Uh, so we both had them, we had both firms provide us cost uh, for each one of those designs, just depending on, we may choose to go with a custom designer, we may not, just depends how the hydraulics were, how the peers line up in the ch- or if they end up in the channel, but regardless, we want them to provide us that in case if we do decide to go with a custom route. Uh, but, so either way, I mean, you're looking at uh, roughly hundred and let me start over. For Origin Design, using a custom design, you're looking right around the two, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar dollar range, and for using the H thirty design, which is the DOT standard, just adding additional spans, is just, what's rounded up to right at a hundred thousand dollars. Calvin Burns was for their custom design, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and for their H thirty design, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, I guess, let me back up. Do you want me to give you the exact numbers on that?
No.
Okay. Because, like I said, these aren't going to be hard numbers that could vary depending on what we run into for geotechnical stuff for borings and
So we're not
Are we, were we awarding this at this time?
What we're awarding, the selection of, basically, where we're gonna recommend the awarding Origin Design, the
Then we probably need hard numbers.
We're just kidding. So, I mean, when you're talking a hundred thirty.
Origin was one twenty-five, correct?
Yes, hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
For a custom or the span?
For the custom, using an H thirty, if we choose to, uh, would be ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
And so what I'm asking is, like, you and Todd and whoever, um, looked these over, will you, are ready to make a recommendation as far as what you see in the plans and design and so on and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, we looked through them in depth. I mean, they both have pretty expensive proposals sent to us. Uh, and like I said, it's all there, what we've asked for, so it's just, it's not like one missed something or overthought something.
And your recommendation?
Yeah, our recommendation is to award it to Origin Design, uh. They don't have a contract yet because with the dollar amount, if, if they're rewarded, it, they would need per their policy, they use anything over a hundred thousand dollars would use their EJ DC contract, which engineers, a lot of consultants use that, it's more of a, lays out terms and conditions and all that for, it's their policy to use it once they their proposals read.
But the numbers won't change.
Not really. One thing is, it depends on, we won't know what final design we will want to use until we come back, until we know what the preliminary design is and the hydraulics, because that's gonna dictate what we would choose to do with a final design.
So, so if we approve the preliminary design, I'm gonna call it, we can always change to the final design if we so desire?
Yeah, like
So like the final design would change if we're, if we're doing the different spans and it has to go further because of the boring samples or something? Is that what you're?
So the final design is gonna be dictated upon the preliminary design of doing their hydraulics and figuring, okay, where where does the bridge need to be placed with the hydraulics, and if using, say, the standard details, where do those peers line up in the channel? What if a peer ends up right in the middle of the channel? Okay, now, do we need to look at then using a custom design that can allow for longer spans, so that way the chan- there's not a peer in the middle of the channel, and that costs a little more in design cost, but it's also may save on construction cost as well, because you have less peers to build, uh, the beams are gonna be a little bit more expensive, but you have less peer construction and cost for dams.
So it's gonna come up.
So it, it's hard to say, but it, it could equate to construction cost savings, but a long story short, we won't know what final design option to do until the preliminary design and hydraulics are done, but either way, there's pretty substantial cost difference that even if you were to have a custom design with Origin, it's still gonna be quite a bit below using the cus- or the standard design from Calvin Burns, so.
Uh, no, my question is, you said we gotta go through the historic. What, is there something happened historic with this bridge, or is it just old?
It's over fifty years old, and it's
We've got a lot of that.
And it's and it's they won't know for sure until we do our, as part of this design, what we do with all of our bridges, we have a, an archaeological study done on them, and as part of that process, it determines if a bridge like this or any of them are eligible or not, but just given the age of this one, the type of bridge that it is with the high trusses and everything, it's, and they both origin, Calvin Burns both stated that too, that it's likely gonna come back as historic. So, if that's the case, it requires us to do all this alternatives feasibility report, which, like I said, we're
Does it have to be put back as a, like, type of bridge, or?
That would be that could be possible if it's not able to be all that would be determined as part of the alternatives feasibility report on what can be done to preserve the historic, whether it is, can the bridge be used somewhere else or not, or
I've had three people say it needs to go to F.
But that'll be determined as part of the feasibility report. Okay, and like I said, somebody like the geotechnical services, you know, like it's not gonna be, what the number here, this final number isn't, is likely not going to be the final number, because there's just some unknowns, like do we need to go deeper with the borings, because they both assumed a certain depth, and if you need to go deeper, that adds a little bit more cost, so
Were their depth and their quote similar, though?
Yeah, yeah. And they both were, the cost for that were not too far partyed or as far as that goes, so, but I just wanted you to, we were, this number, I guess, isn't the final, it might not be the final number, there are some unknowns as we get into it, especially once you start doing the feasibility stuff or the historic part. You know, like, they, they give us a expected rate, both of them gave an expected rate, but depending on what hoops we have to jump through, it just we don't know what's all involved, so, long story short, I just want you to be aware that this cost.
Make a motion, we proceed with Origin with the design for the Channelworth Bridge replacement.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the, uh, design as presented, recommended and presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Last, I'll just give an update on our construction projects, since there seems to be quite a bit going on right now. Forty-Ninth Street Bridge, uh, Schrader's work is wrapping up today on it, uh, S-two will be coming in next week to do the final grading and rip wrap placement, and then guard rail will follow sometime after that, but bridge deck is poured, the railing's all poured, uh, so as far as actual bridges in, the bridge is in, uh, that should be wrapping up here within the next month and a half. Uh, the Two Hundred and Eighth Street Bridge, or OC thirty-five sixty-five, is that day labor bridge is completed, and that road is open as of last Friday.
That's the one north here.
North to south of it, Chris?
Yeah.
Yep, that one's completed and road's open. Uh, traders have moved on to the next one over the bridge VB twenty-eight eighty-seven, which is, um, just east of Preston on four hundred and forty-sixth Avenue. Uh, that road is, was closed last week, so they can move their cranes and stuff in, and they're actually removing the bridge today, and will likely be driving piled for that tomorrow. Uh, Thirty-third Street project that, uh, resurfacing was last week, River City was into mill, and place HMA on that, so that is all done, and pavement markings are actually being done as we speak, if not maybe done already. Uh, the reclaim, they are finishing up the Preston shop roads this week, little too wet today, so they're not reclaiming today, but depending on what we get for rain this afternoon, likely finish up the Preston Shop Road this week, barring any substantial rain, and then from there, all that's left is the Sterling Shop Road, it's about ten miles, so good look at it, as we have the whole month of October, get ten miles done, so.
I have a question on that.
Mm-hmm.
So we kind of changed roads that we were reclaiming. Well, then, in this last spring, they really didn't hit some of them roads that are were down to be reclaimed, that didn't get reclaimed. So they may be, like, very shy on some rock.
I can talk with Todd about that and see if, yeah, we can
I had some people kind of wondering what's gonna happen there, because they kind of got, missed the spring with, or, you know, spring into summer.
Yeah.
Their rocks, and then since, you know, like, they kind of changed, and they were just doing too long stretches.
Yeah, I'll bring that up for Tom, um, and luckily, we didn't change a whole lot from what we had planned. We did change some on the fact of there could have been, there may have been a stretch of a road in one shop where we were doing, say, the north and south end, but the center portion we didn't do said, well, does it maybe make sense just to do that entire stretch of road and eliminate some of the hopscotching around, uh? So luckily, we didn't do it a whole lot, but that is a good point, now, uh.
I mean, I think the roads they did over there were
Mm-hmm.
good roads to get done, but
And so what we did now, knowing that, is we had the guys go through and mark up their, what their gradient maps are, like, okay, roads come or identify as roads, say, ten, just come up with ten miles for roads for next year to do, based on what you guys see as far as what roads are more of a maintenance issue for you, or what roads do you uh, see that have more traffic maybe than what we are aware of? So they've marked ten miles for roads in their areas for next year to do, and uh, we looked for some, haven't finished looking through all of them, but at least gets them involved too, like, okay, this is, yeah, we think these roads should be done, and I think, I mean, I feel like honestly, most of them, they all make sense to me, so.
Hopefully, they should avoid some of that. They should know, I mean, they should have input that way, and, and I mean, you know which ones, whether they're heavily trafficked or higher weight limit or higher traffic, bigger volume, but
And the goal is to also avoid
I guess, I know the condition
A couple of these that didn't get crowned this year are
Someone probably hoping to get it done.
Like some big, yeah, Big Farmer Roads that
Mm-hmm.
will be a mess probably if we don't get some rock on them.
I know, I just, uh, conditions weren't ideal for grading in the last couple of months, but they're getting there now with some moisture, so uh, some of these roads are really in need, you know, they're wash forty and they, they got put off, so I don't know what your schedule is on some of them roads, I could check with you, but
For the ones that we've reclaimed recently?
No, just in general, yeah, I mean, there, there are some that need it, you know, and
Now, you, like you said, like, we, now that we've gotten good rain
Yeah.
That makes a difference.
Well, I've heard that, and I just
They should be
I'd like to see some action on them, then. All right. Anything else, Jayden?
Nope, that's all I have.
All right, appreciate it, um. I know you've been working a little bit with, uh, city and I don't know if Marty's involved in the conver- conversation or not, but so I'd like to see some progress with the for, for, I know Josh was in here three weeks ago and wanted to do it. Sooner than later, I thought the contractor was here or in town, but
I'll, I'll get with, I'll call Frank. Get ahold of him and see what he
And I don't know if Marty's gonna be here, he's on the, he's on the agenda, so we'll quiz him and see where we're at with the
I'll go get hold of Frank and get that ball rolling, so we can get our stuff.
Yep. Appreciate it. Thanks, Jayden. All right, are there any visitors or citizens here to address the board today? Lori, is that our Lori? Okay, well, nobody's addressing us, so we'll move on. Next on our agenda is Julie Fern, our Drug Free Commissioner's, uh, Coordinator.
Good morning.
Communities Project Coordinator, I'm sorry, good morning.
I'm actually here, so there's been some just requests for funds from the opioid settlement group, and apparently they've been referred to me to so I guess I'm bringing them to you on other people's behaves. I did take them, look at the settlement document and code them, like the disposal bags fit under section G-four of the approved uses, the Narcan bags, I believe, is B-two. Both of the quests fit, um, the one from law enforcement, it's either Narcan little pouches to wear on their vest, so that if they come across someone, they're not having to, like, run back to the car and find these little itty-bitty Narcan, they're little, um, that they'll be on their person, um, and that was what the Bellevue and Subuia Police requested. The city of Macocota and the sheriff's office wanted the bag or boxes that, um, keep the Narcan stable, it's temperature sensitive, so leaving it in a police car in the dead of summer and in the dead of winter, it's kind of a issue of temperature, and so there's these boxes, which I believe they sent you information on. They requested those to store their Narcan. Narcan is an approved use, making it accessible and keeping it like usable and not ruining it by not storing it correctly. I think they fall under the section B-two of the um, settlement document.
Are they carrying these boxes in and out?
In there, um. The city of Macocota police cars, it, it's not like the sheriffs, I mean, there's only so many, so those are, like, used all the time, it's not like, you know, they go home and sit while somebody's not on duty, so they would be in the cars. That's my understanding.
I'm surprised Bellevue wanted the, the police officers carry it off anyway with their stuff, putting another pouch or something on there.
Um, Ryan Klaft and, um, Chief Schrader, they're the ones that came up with it, and they, that's what they think, but they want to have it, so if they come across someone, they have it. It's not running back to the car, finding the box, getting it and coming back. Somebody's overdosed and unresponsive, they wanna and that, I did ask the other police, um, so Chief Nixon in Subuia wants one of the pouches as well. Um, and I've not talked to soon-to-be Chief Grover from Preston yet. Um, he may want one or the other, I don't know, he hasn't started officially, is my understanding.
So these Pelican cases, were they, the, there was, I agree to note from you that somebody else, uh, they use two to three hundred of, of these a year?
That would be these, that would be the de-Tera bags.
That would be de-Tera bags, and how were they purchased prior?
So we're going to de-Tera bags?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm staying them.
I, I
So, there was federal dollars, there was, um, that we would get them, and those monies have dried up. I don't have access to them, so we've got probably a thousand of them in the last three years from a federal source, and that federal source doesn't exist anymore, so we haven't had any since April or May.
Okay, personally, I have made a couple of calls, you know, on some of these things, because I don't know enough about it, I apologize. Um, as far as, um, if they're legit and if they really need them, or if it's something that's coming in, I've found that in our, in, in talking to several different individuals, that it seems like maybe, and, and we talked to Lisa a little bit about it too, and she suggests maybe that we have a form that we could fill out, and do you have something here?
I actually handed it out to you today, um, because I think as we go forward, I think we need to have the form filled out, we need to adopt this form with a signature on the back. And that way, we know, I mean, as an example, that Julie did, um, she did code this one for the de-Tera bags as G-four. When I look at um, the, our, our, what we're, the guide, so G-four is a prevention program. Okay, so that's highlighted, so G means prevention program. Four means funding for community drug disposal programs. So that's how she's coded this in, you know, the guide, but I'm sorry, Julie, what did you say for the, for the
Narcan, I believe it'd be, um, B-two, it's Narcan, and then getting it in the hands of people?
So B, um, so B on the Schedule A, which is the core strategies, B is the medication-assisted treatment, distribution and other
Narcan, you're right, it should be the first one, isn't it?
Okay, so then A is naloxone or other FDA-approved drug to reverse opioid overdoses, and A uh, A-one is expand the training for first responders, schools, community support groups and families. And A-two is increased distribution to individuals who are, who are uninsured or whose insurance does not cover the needed service.
Okay, with that being said, even, um, I, I mean, I understand when you sent an email out last week as requesting or asking for an ask, I, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think we, if we would have something like this that we can look at and have it, so it has an explanation on it.
Yeah.
I mean, is it gotta e- explain it so I can understand it, I don't know. You know, it's, it's like, I'm asking this, I'm asking for this because, and this is why I need it, or they want it, or need it, um. I'm, I'm not trying to limit
Well, I don't want you to be the one that fills all these out for everybody.
And I don't want to fill them up.
Yeah.
Right.
They, they fill them out, right, and you, you can kind of verify.
Yeah.
And then we can proceed, and, you know, because it's not, Lisa, it's not your job to look and say, these don't match, you know, A-one, B-two, whatever.
Right.
It's just, we can say, this was
To me, they should fill that out, get it to you, you should verify that it's under the correct thing.
So did, did you make this up, or we're discovering?
Um, did I personally make
She re- invented the wheel.
But I know who made it up.
Okay, so I'm sorry, what, what is project abstract? Is that an explanation of what is used for?
Paragraph describing, whenever I write a project abstract, it's just abstract, it's a description.
Okay, that's an explanation of
Yeah, yeah, whatever the project is, yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna use this example, they want to buy twenty-eight different bags or boxes or whatever you want to call it. Don't you think we need to know where they're going?
Yeah, a- and I need, I guess I needed some more explanation, like, for the, the other bags, if, if that federal funding had dried up, that, well, that would have been nice to know in the
Well, with, as far as where they're going, to me, if there's like a centralized location, that they could be helped, because maybe the, for the next several months, it's Jackson, Macocota has more of a need, but all of a sudden, maybe it pops up in Subuia or Bellevue, they have more of a need, there, there needs to be like a centralized location where they can get replacements, whatever. Um, we always need to be looking for additional funding, but I don't know if we can allocate to, you know, the same amount to every service, because you never know where the need's gonna be, so, will these like, the ones, how many do you have right now?
The tear bags?
Yeah.
We haven't had any for months.
Okay.
Hmm.
So, in the past, did you keep them?
They were in the ASAC office, then I would get a call, can you bring me some to hospice, and there's been some other, um, funeral home one-time meds, and we brought all these, they wanted to get rid of meds, which that made sense when they said it, they had somebody come in, so then people would call and I would take them wherever they need to go.
So, one case, how many's in a case?
Two hundred bags.
And I mean, do they put
Two hundred bags in the medium, to be fair.
Do they use them more than, I mean, do they use them till they're full?
No.
They use them once and then they're done?
Whether you put one bottle in it or fill it
One bill.
Fully full, so hospice, which is the biggest user of them, when, you know, hospice meds change a lot, so they'll be in somebody's house, and they might have two or three, and they get, and they're immediately gone. And then give them, because a lot of those are meds that are abused, because they're heavy duty, obviously, end-of-life meds.
Yeah.
Um, the whole, yeah, and then you add water, you seal the bag and throw it, the whole thing is biodegradable, and then it's let on landfill safe and it goes away.
Well, the meds ain't biodegradable.
There's, if you believe science, the carbon, it's a carbon-based product that deactivates the medication and makes it inactive.
So the bag deteriorates?
And the carbon and everything in it is supposed to be
Okay. So what are, what have they been doing the last couple of months without it?
I believe people have been hauling meds illegally to drop boxes, only you can be transporting your meds, and so having somebody else, hey, take all this morphine and drive it somewhere is really not best practice, and that's what's kind of been happening.
Depends on they give it to you.
Well, at least we come get it if they get called. Um, and our, all of them have been very good about it, they get called, um, you know, we've had, had a, apparently, liquid morphine injectables become, uh, there's a lot of it out there in hospice, and that is highly abused and highly sought out, so we want to get rid of that stuff really quickly.
So I, I guess, I don't know how we want to proceed, I, I guess I would like to have a record of something like this, so that you have, if you get audited, you say, well, where was the request and what was it for, and now you can explain to whoever.
Can you approve the adoption of the form today?
Well, sure, like, one amendment, I would like you got the agency representative, I would assume that'd be like Cropper, whoever's asking for it, and then a, a cosign where it's come to you and you have approved it, and, um, Julie can countersign or whatever, if we can get that added to the form, and then I would make that motion with that, with that change, if that's okay. Or if we can.
Can we do that now? Is that, is this where we're doing that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're, we're discussing and for the funds, now we're, we're making a
Are you approving?
We're approving the form.
Then in addition, additional signature.
Amendmented.
If you're okay with that, Julie?
Yep. And, yeah, and I
I mean, we're not trying to be difficult.
And I didn't think so, we're working for a process.
Right.
I'm totally fine with that.
We're trying to get everybody
A little bit of a catch-up here.
Her needs, your needs, you need these needs.
Because like the gloves, I, I still don't know that, that you're approved, I don't know where they would fit, but we guess they're approved as we're gonna move forward, the, um, needleproof gloves or whatever that were done.
That bill has already been submitted.
It has, but yeah, I get it, but that would be an example where we probably should have had that on a form, so
We should go back and retro that into a form, so it's classified that way, classified somewhere. All right, so we, we have, I have a motion on the table.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to move forward with the approval of a form as amended for, um, disposal and dispersment of opioid settlement funds. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, oppose, same sign? Motion carried.
Sounds good, we're getting
Thank you, Julie.
Like cases of this
Can you get what?
When the approval of these cases of the gel pouches or whatever, do you track kind of who's
I have, yeah, I had two for the last funder that we gave out this many here, and yeah.
Yeah.
We always kept, and, I mean, it's not great detail, but on a day, who took them and how many, yes. And then, you know, I kept that level.
Just approved the form, you did not approve
Right.
The form.
Yeah.
Just gonna approve the form, not the funds.
Correct.
These filled out.
And then come back.
Come back.
Yep.
Cool, thank you very much.
All right, we'll get through this.
Yeah, we appreciate you working with that and, and understanding that we need to have a
A good track.
A good process.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
If it's a procedure to do this, to fill the form and ask and, and present your case and
And if you think that form needs something else.
And if they really want it, then they're gonna have to sign their name to it, I kind of like that.
Yeah, I know, I mean, that makes somebody respond.
First, we're just calling and saying, I want this, and then
Yeah, until like re-in for hospice, I just need to get it on paper and get it to
You know, we put every two words of discussion we had in the minutes, we'd have three full pages, and we can't afford it.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Um, next on our agenda is Elizabeth. And she Oh, Nathan's in front of Elizabeth. So you jumped right up there, old Nathan, good one up there. Good morning, Nathan Jones, our Jackson County Conservation Director.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good.
All right. Well, I guess I'll give you a
Well, I guess I'll give you an update on last meeting. Um, it was a well attended meeting, but um I'm gonna stay out of the dirt here on some of it. Um, one of the main things our board kind of brought forward on that meeting was discussing the new display at the Hurstville Interative Center. Um, so.
Did you say a new display, I have not seen it.
Yep, we're in the design phase of a display.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I'll get, I can get a over here, um, we're just starting the fundraising. Point of trying to raise money to pay for this display October fourteenth, we're gonna have our first kind of kickoff for this. Fundraiser to get a display, it's kind of. Tie into our Wildland and Prairie display, it's gonna be a cave with uh going into a woodland display as you walk in the door. Um, our kind of goal was next year's gonna be our twentieth anniversary for the center, so we were trying to. Bring something new to keep the center lively and have people come back and um have new people join us there. So we don't have a final cost estimate yet, but um. We, we're starting our fundraiser and just knowing that it's gonna be fairly expensive, twenty years ago, those displays each were fifty thousand that are on the floor. Per displays, we're expecting, we're hoping it's gonna come in that hundred thousand range, but who knows with inflation. Um, so that was brought up, um, so far we have a D R A grant already for twenty five thousand. And we have friends have committed over ten thousand dollars to it. Um, so. We're right around that thirty five, forty thousand with some fundraising already that's gone on, um. October fourteenth, the friends are gonna kickoff. That was brought to the, our board is, are you guys willing to ask for support from you guys in the future? And they they submitted to it, I'm not gonna lie, I didn't hear, cause there wasn't enough talking in my ear on another end, but I know they agreed to support on. Going forward with asking for funds from you guys, um, on that display. So that was the main portion of the meeting, um.
So when does, when does, are you thinking this play is gonna come to fruition as far as? Uh, starting or approving or doing it without all the funds or?
We're hoping to have all the funds raised and have it paid for by summer next year. And maybe kickoff next.
Why I'm saying that is because of budget.
Yep.
So we don't have nothing in the budget or anything.
Yeah, you don't have anything now, that's why.
You, things are gonna get really tight by the end of this year, I'm thinking with this whole project out. East is going on and we're not really sure where we're at, um.
Yeah.
It's, we're walking lately, I should.
I think there's ways we can get this done without tightening the airbus budget anymore.
Appreciate that.
So I think there's, and we're, we're pretty, our friends group is awesome, they are. Darn good at raising money when they get their mindset to a project, so I think that one. Um, that one will hopefully come along pretty good for that. Um, speaking of budget, um, our current budget, we have money for. A skid loader and trailer, that was twenty five thousand, try to find a used one. I uh, the board had mentioned at the board meeting before and I forgot to mention to you guys. We keep putting a bunch of money into a mower that's costing us a lot of money, like thousands of dollars in repairs. They were wondering what your guys' thoughts are on moving some of that money over and try to replace that mower for now, cause it seems to be.
Um, are we talking like, uh, like a mower mower, lawnmower, uh, four zero zero turn type thing or something?
Yeah, it's one of ours, I shouldn't say terrible, but a zero. Commercial mower, thirty seventy two inch mower deck.
Is it got the hours or the years?
It's it's a.
We didn't consider that.
I wanna say it's twenty twelve. It's what I believe the year was on that one, I'm not a hundred percent, and I don't know the hours off my head, I know we put about seven thousand repairs, I know it already, and it's. It's leaking fluid as we speak again. So. Um, and Toro is not backing any of it back up on that one, so. That just, that was discussion, maybe we try to get that. While we got some money to move it around and see what your guys' thoughts were.
I guess my thoughts are, is where do you stand with the need for the skid loader?
Well. Yeah, I've done a little research and I think it's gonna be tight and. The way it is, just talking to a few dealerships to try to find something in the same size class for the price.
I would agree.
What we have is what they kind of said for used and so it might be a, I guess, we'll work with what we got, try to move on. I think the mower, I mean, we obviously move a lot of stuff and that's kind of a. When we go down on having a mower out, it's tough to keep up on what we need to mow, so. Um. I know those darn commercial mowers are not cheap, um, so it's a. I haven't done any bedding or anything, but that was something that was brought up just to discuss with you guys, or you guys can have discussion at some point.
Well, one's the needs, um, you want a new skid loader all there, but if you need it in lower, I mean.
Yeah.
More. You gotta function, you gotta keep on top of things or it gets away.
Yeah.
David Gray's is going, hasn't been a top priority here.
Yeah.
Might as much to mow.
Yeah, it's the only place it seems to be growing on is that screws for some reason there, so. Um, that's something for you guys to discuss, um. And then.
Now, just, you'd have a loader tractor and a skid loader and all that kind of stuff?
We do have a tractor, uh, ninety two John Deere, um, and then we have a skid loader and then we have a. I don't know what year my endera.
You get a bucket on your tractor.
Yeah, yeah, so. Um, those things, it would, they cost money to operate, you know, as you all know, um, as of now, they're still working and operable. Um, I think that reason we brought that one, the skid loader in as a option, cause we thought it was at its top trade in value at that point. At the age it was at and ours, um, to try to maximize our dollars at times, so. Um. Yeah.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed if you move some of that money to. Buy a long.
No, I don't know that it's for, yeah, we're gonna discuss it, we'll discuss it now, if you think, I mean, you're making a request to do that, I I mean, it's your budget. So if you can buy without skid loader and you use it on the mower, I guess that's your decision basically, I appreciate you asking, but.
Yeah, and I think, well, I'll wait till I get a final approval from the board, but they just wanted me to kind of discuss with you guys.
I I don't know that you're gonna buy a sufficient skid loader for twenty five thousand dollars.
No, probably not, so. Um, and then, while I have you, Luann is gonna forward on, um. We have a twenty eighty agreement that we've had for thirty years at Pine Valley on the west side of the county.
We have it.
Oh, she gave it to you guys.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna ask her to get me on the agenda in the future to have you agree, we've already been maintaining, it's nothing different, it's just the one expired, it's a new. Sign.
I guess my question is, why are we maintaining the state's property?
It's, a lot of counties do it, it's just ties into our area, we're the ones with access.
And what's our advantage to do that, other than thinking of time that your people don't have?
I'm gonna say. Technically, we really don't do anything with it.
So we don't get to log that either as far as beneficial to us?
I don't believe so.
Does that would be damaged pretty hard in the deracial too, did I, or is that somewhere else?
That section I don't think did, but pretty close, probably on that property, there was some.
Did we have one over by Baldwin somewhere that got ripped up pretty bad?
Yeah, Black Hawk. And we did a harvest there, tried to salvage as much as we could. Oh, and if something were to happen like that on there, I think we have a good enough relationship with the state that we probably get something out of it.
I mean, that's what we wanted, a good relationship, but what I'm saying is there's no compensation here for us to do.
I I think our compensation is I get to use their equipment all the time and steal stuff.
Well, that's makes a difference to me, I don't.
Then they have let us borrow their skid loader before and their tractors and mower.
For like two months?
Well, I don't know, but I mean, I think it's trying to be a good real partners and.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So this isn't much work on our staff.
Okay, in the long run.
That's that's my question, I know that.
Doesn't take a ton of your time, that's what else is really.
Um, but that, I guess, think about it and if you have questions, call me on that, and we'll have, um. Luann put it on the agenda, did she get it to you too?
But it doesn't say twenty eighty.
Oh, my email does, so I guess I'll have to.
I guess that would be my question.
We'll have to make sure.
Yeah.
It came from a state attorney, so I don't know what that.
Yeah, it's classified as a management agreement.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so that's about all I have for you guys that I guess I can talk about at this point, but.
Harbor wall.
Yep, it's still planning on, just once the boats are out, um, coming in. And this last meeting was kind of controversial, so I left a lot of stuff off for. Um, our board to even discuss, I had several things I wanted to bring to them, but I decided it wasn't the time. And place to bring in on, um, but as of now, we're still working with. Hopefully, as soon as those docks start moving, I'm hoping boats start getting pulled out any day as the school weather comes on. They technically have a contract end October for their docks, um. I wanted to bring it to our board, say, do we wanna compensate them if they could pull out fifteen, twenty days earlier?
Necessary, you, uh, obviously the river's not gonna.
It's not.
Rides anytime soon, well.
Yeah, hopefully not, supposed to go to five foot at the end of next week, but.
That's only a foot and a half where it's at.
Yeah.
That's a long ways from twenty.
Yeah, so I I really hope we're fine there, um. There's, there's, the harbor's been questioned on contracts and how we go about some of that winter storage. Starting to get those things that even bring them to our board, I'm like, God, this isn't the time and place. Um, what we're charging for winter storage and docks, or do we wanna continue doing that, those things are. So October might get busy for our board meeting with questions for them again, so. Um, you guys have any other questions for me?
Well, I do not, I don't think.
No, just as a, you know, and this is something that I utilize a lot, and I just look at, I've been doing a lot of kayaking and stuff, you go to Jones County, you see those boat ramps and stuff.
They're nice.
How much would it be to just do something like what it, what we got, like at Fifth Street?
Just a ramp.
Just the, yeah, just this a minute slab.
For Bridgeport, and that's what I've been putting in grants for, is just to do the grading and put a ramp and Alex with Buchanan County has. Quoted at around that seventy five thousand dollar mark.
Just for the slab.
Yep. So. It's a lot of money, and I think it's more to rock to stabilize the edges of it, and. There's concrete, I don't really understand where they have to dig toes in and stuff, but.
I mean, supposedly, I do, the like Macocota, there's, it's a eatin' underneath.
Yeah.
There's.
Well. We have one at fifty two access and Sprayville and Joinerville and everyone, those concrete, we have some problems right now. I'm trying to scratch my head.
So that was probably a living learn too, that, uh, yeah, you gotta put a bulkhead or something out there to keep it from undermining and.
Yeah, so, yeah. Couple of them were breaking and falling in, couple of them were got a big hole under them.
Yeah.
So we try to shove rock under them as much as we can, but that's harder with every flood, something new comes, so. Yeah, I think Bridgeport is still priority of our board to try to figure.
Joinerville Bridgeport.
Yep. Yep. Royer Town.
Royer Town, Royer Town isn't bad, it's fairly.
It's the road getting in is the problem, people get stuck trying to get going out of that sometimes when that rock gets loose.
Yeah. It's just, I do, you just see the usage.
Yep.
And then you compare it to, you go up the river a little bit, up the watershed, and. It's just amazing, I don't know how they import, I mean, cause some of those are extravagant.
Yeah, and they've gotten grant money through that water trails.
Yeah.
Stuff that we're just finally approved into the programs, but still, they've somehow are finding thirty percent match for some of those. And I know, like, I believe somebody told me ED Mills was a three hundred thousand dollar project. It's just in the Jones County.
Um, the one thirty six bridge, it's the next access up, it is, uh, you can back in a forty foot yacht. Down that boat ramp, and it's got limestone.
Yep, the stepped.
Oh, the step line, I mean.
Yeah, it looks great.
Pictures also.
Yeah, I I just drove over there the other day to take pictures.
But see, to me, that's wasted money, I mean, just.
Yep.
Just be able to get down and out, you know.
Yep, so.
You know, or get in and out, that would be, uh.
Yeah.
But I know with the water, uh, talking with the Water Management Authority, I've mentioned it several times, and that's something they're looking at too, if they're seeing seeing ways that we can help or.
Yeah, if there's other grants out there that I'm unaware of or something, it's the, it's finding the match and.
Yeah.
Getting ourselves. And I don't know why we seem to be scoring right outside the money every time when I do apply to those. Water trails things, but I've been told it's cause we're not asking for the whole project with the state designed, but I don't know. Truly, or. But there's just other better projects out there, so.
Thanks, man.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Something changes.
Hopefully nothing new. I can use some sleep.
No news is good. Alright, next on our agenda is Elizabeth Townsend, our Jackson County Health Administrator, and she has sent me a message that she was, uh. Called out, didn't say dog, like she said, animal bite case that was very urgent. So she asked if she could be delayed till next weekend, and I said yes, so. She would not be showing, so. Um, so Marty.
He's coming.
He's coming, okay, would you like to proceed, or do you wanna do Luann's portion or?
I have quite a bit.
I see that.
Yeah, and I believe someone is coming, so, um, I would like to meet you.
Okay. So. No, she had a. And do some personal business.
Oh.
I don't know what she said she'd be back, but I don't know.
Everyone are just recessed. I think Josh is there, do you wanna?
Yeah, Josh, you wanna talk to us?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
Maybe ten minutes, but.
Yeah, we're good.
Um.
Don't be complaining about no parking lot progress.
So, if you had questions on this quality flow environmental thing, I'd be happy to explain. Everything I know to you and, um, a a number of folks, uh, know what they intend to start making right away.
Okay, let's maybe start from the beginning of what this call.
Sure.
Oh my god.
Um, so.
Anyway, this is John Bolt from our.
Yes, Josh Bolt, from the city of Macocota, and, um. So last year, Jackson County Economic Alliance had a potential, uh, manufacturer. That had been in contact with me for the better part of a year or more, and and they wanted the old pillow factory building that is now controlling out. Um, and so that got leased up, and then they were trying to figure out where else they could be. And their business is to take, um, fertilizer, dried fertilizer. And then reprocess it into organic materials, and they have four product lines they would like to, uh, start making, I have two here, um. And I think this is all they're gonna start with, but it's activated charcoal, biochar and organic fertilizer you'd use in gardens and, uh. So they wanted Macocota and were faithful to Macocota because, uh, it needs to be a dairy cow that they grab this fertilizer from. I don't know why, it can't be a beef or anything. Um, and they like our location because we're in the middle of Prairie Farms' supply chain. And logistically for them, makes sense to have, uh, our relationship set here because of these mega dairies that Prairie Farms relies on. Um, and so they had it.
And it was specifically fed, dairy cows, correct?
I don't know if it's fed dairy cows or what what the difference might be there, um.
I thought, I thought you said they had to be fed a certain ration.
Diet. I don't, I don't know about their diet, but I do know it just has to be, um, dairy cow, so. Uh, you know, through through like the last eighteen months or so. Uh, we've gone through some various, uh, pledge letters of support as they're trying to grab USDA grants and. They're comfortable enough at this point that they put in a purchase agreement for property down in the industrial park by the Grammy Dollar. Uh, what we know is that it's at least five and a half acres. Um, it's likely to be more based on truck traffic size, they just don't have their exact schematics built out yet. But what they're intending to do is lease back from a spec builder, so that they lease back the property, and so. Um. Important for the community to know that, um, they have an air quality certification that they have to stand by. And make sure that it does not smell, it does not pollute the environment and these things. And they cannot change that process, so I mean, I personally feel like we cannot have another Sonac in our town in in Macocota. Um, pressed them pretty hard along this line, well, the first question people are gonna have is, does it smell? If it's a fertilizer plant, the answer we continue to get is no. And one of the most recent meetings I had with them is honestly wanting to know about water pressures and how much water they're consuming and trying to make some projections in that way. And they took that to mean as if, are we, are they, are they remoistening the fertilizer that comes to the plant? Not at all, so very, very little water usage, very, very little water. Um, none at all that I'm aware of that gets reintroduced into the process, but what happens here. Is that ultimately it's, uh, on the farm drying, and then they take that dry fertilizer to the plant, there's nothing wet that comes to the plant. And so their objective for the farmer, whoever they partner with. Is that they're somehow coming into an agreement with the unused manure that gets left at the end of the season and dried out. Cause I guess there's some waste there every year that doesn't get applied to the fields, so. Um, I've done this with a number of people, but I have. If you wanna smell it, just to kind of check, you know, what comes out the doors. Uh, what they have, so, yeah, please don't spill it all over your papers, but. Uh, what they have, so, uh, yeah, please don't spill it all over your papers, but.
You know, I know in the past ten years, there's more and more of these separators on these farms and, and, and bigger operations as far as. The newer separator than they're using for a lot of different products. When it comes out of these separators, they're really dry to begin. What's it look like? Looks like, oh, that was teaching Chong, I better. So you have a, a sample of the, uh, did you say charcoal?
This, this is the.
So this, it doesn't come in like a charcoal form that you put now?
That, that is, that's like.
If you need to throw up and you go to the hospital?
That's what it looks like.
I'm not talking about charcoal and putting on a grill.
No, you're talking activated charcoal. So what did you say? It looks like that, and it's not my.
It smells empty.
It smells like dirt. Smells like hay barn.
Yeah.
They're playing a fifty thousand square foot building. I've heard anywhere from thirty to fifty employees, and they have said that they're high paying, which their public release. Was, uh, that's gonna pay about the media for Jackson County. Not as concerned about this one, this cleanup easy.
Yeah.
That charcoal might have everywhere, so. You want to smell it?
I trust that you didn't smell anything, I just wanted to know.
Well, you come from the farm, you tell us what it smells like.
That one smells like.
Yeah, don't tell her, hey Kelly, don't tell her, let her make her own.
I hope I didn't steal your topic. Okay. Um, so anyway, we've gotten some phone calls about what fertilizer means here, and I just wanted to come and. Explain your public session, what we know right.
Appreciate it, yeah, because I mean, I know there's questions out there, of course, and when you read it, and this is what it is, and. You know, I, I don't know, it's kind of contracts they have with locals, you know, as far as buying the product, or if the product, i- it has to be separated beforehand. And if they put that equipment in, or it's a lot of.
Yeah.
But obviously, they've been in the business, so.
Yeah, well, one, one piece they're hoping to develop too, that I think is really smart, is there, there's some sort of septic tank. And wastewater plant treatment material they want to make eventually that helps break down organic material, if you know what I mean, quicker. And so I think that would be really neat if it got set up while here.
Something we can use, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing that smells in that.
No. Yep. It's, um.
Nope, it wasn't, it smells worse in larger quantity.
It's a hay barn. Yeah, they did say they'd use quite a bit of natural gas. It's about what we know for consumption of.
And water usage, did, did I read something about that? No?
Very, very low. I wanna know what pressure to make sure.
Yeah.
Cause every once in a while, family dollar drains some sort of, uh, reservoir down there.
Um.
To keep up, it can become challenged, so we like to be notified when they're gonna do that. But, um, they took that question as if like I was trying to find a roundabout way to see if they're remoistening their, their manure. From the facility, and they were pretty hard on saying, we're not using any water, so I. Seem to believe is not gonna be any like SONAC-like issues where.
Respond back, say, you're not flushing a toilet then.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, a little of that, but.
It'd be interesting, it's nice to see something going on at the industrial park.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'll be really nice to see a shovel on the ground, in my opinion, so hopefully. Uh, we do see that, and, um, there's no, there's no city tiff going into this right now, they haven't come and strongly demanded or anything like that. But, uh, the price of the land is, uh, valued in such a way that our broker felt like that is important for. Uh, companies to look at as part of the economic package, cause their brokers are aware of our tiff load, so. Well, that's where we stand.
Appreciate it. Yep, Dave. Come back anytime you want.
Dana will be getting in touch with you guys about making this contract, so we can get that.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, Frank, uh, Frank's been given kind of a mission here this week to see what's going on, so.
Well, yeah, and I don't know how much Marty knows, but maybe if you wanna hang around, his reporter's next, so.
Sure.
I know time is valuable, thanks, Josh. So Marty Hoodlick, our Jackson County, um, maintenance department supervisor, good morning.
Morning. Um, on the deal with the hydrant, um, I did fill out the application, um. Lisa sent him a letter saying that we'll pay it, cause there's a hundred dollar, uh, fee to get him to come and. Mark the water lines. Um, they are marked, the plumber come and looked at it, and he, I'm waiting for a quote back on him. But it's, other than that, soon as we get that, we should be good to go. About what? The, removing the hydrant out here.
So, did I, did I hear there is a shut off down below there?
There's not, I don't think there's, we had it open two months ago, I don't think there's a shut off there, but there is a meter. Down in a hole, in a man.
I was informed that there is a shut off down there, but they're still gonna require us to go to the main to shut it off.
Yes.
My question is maybe either to you or to Trudy, is to. Can we make an agreement that, yes, we'll do that, but. Is there a reason for us to tear up that street right now? Can we put that off until maybe further? I mean, then we'll. Cap it at the, at the main, I, I don't know if that's a possibility, but if there is a shut off, doesn't it make sense that we shut that hydrant off?
Yes, I would.
So, but I know. Be something to think, ask Jeff about.
Mm-hmm.
If there is a shut off, can we shut it off, get rid of hydrant, do the parking lot? Then when you guys go through and do the street next time, we will cap it at the main and be done.
I asked him that, and he said no, that it has to be, if you're gonna eliminate it, it has to be capped at the main, is what he told me.
He managed some city property.
Josh, well, is in charge of the man.
That's what he told me.
Some point it has to be, I mean.
Yeah, um, we could pull the ca, uh, the manhole back off there, look down in there, I know there's a meter down in there, but I. Can't say that for sure that there was a valve down in there.
Okay.
All right. All right, with that, um, the senior citizen building, uh, we had to run a bad ballast and light bulbs. Um, and now they're doing that, uh, they wanted a donation box hung on the wall, so I did that. And they also have a request, they wanna put, um, like on a realtor, when a realtor show on the house, that. Box you can push in and have a key in it, they wanna buy one of them that bolts on the front of the door. So that they can put a key in there, so they don't have to come and unlock the building when people want it, and I told them I'd ask the board. Uh, if that would be okay, and I guess that's what I'm doing.
Well, I talked to the, their main volunteer, and that was her solution, Donna.
Yeah.
And I told her to talk to the board, because I don't know if it's the main volunteer position, or.
Wouldn't it make much more sense to put a door latch on there with a combination, if you're gonna do that, you don't want something hanging on the door latch?
Well, it ain't gonna be hanging, it, what they showed me was a little box like this, like this, that you bolt right on the. I would bolt it right on the framework of the, the door.
Like what they have up at Prairie Creek on the side of their building.
They're, they're on all of our listings, yeah, but my point is, why don't you put a handle with a combination lock, that's like on my garage?
And that, I imagine this is probably ten times cheaper, cause that's probably gonna be for.
Oh, come on, I could go up to Menards and buy one for a hundred and fifty.
Well, then I guess I don't know what you're talking about.
It's a latch with a combination.
The one concern I have.
But is it a doorknob?
Yeah, a handle.
Well, this is a push bar, this isn't, doesn't have a door, yeah, it doesn't have a door handle on it.
The one concern I have about having a little box with a key in it, you punch a code, is. It would need to be a decent security rating. Because they were having a problem with somebody trying to use their utilities in the back of the senior center and. And plugs and stuff, and they find out there's this little tin boxer with a key inside, I mean, let me, they were having a problem with, you know, homeless guy kinda floating around the neighborhood. Kind of living behind it, I just don't know how comfortable I would be having to, uh, key in a pop can for better.
Yeah. And I.
It would have to be a secure box.
I do, I do, I can tell you that the boxes that we use is through a Sentry Lock Corporation. And it registers who goes in at what time, it'll, it'll say that you, Don, went in at eight forty-five or.
All I have with a picture, Don, so I can't, I can't do that.
A little bit more, I know that was her just went, man, this would be so quick and easy, she goes to like thirty, and I'm like, hmm. But I gotta think maybe that would be so, that senior board needs to, to kind of coordinate and handle through us.
Did I tell them that they need to discuss that amongst themselves, or would one of you folks wanna do it?
I can.
Okay. I think that would be better.
Yeah.
Okay, um. We, uh, the push button, replacing batteries in the automatic doors in the men's restroom, um, they're having a mouse problem. In there.
Where?
The hay cab building, uh, because. The people that use the garage door, they get there early in the morning, they leave the door wide open for. Hours on end, and she takes the mice are coming in there, there, we went, I went down there and there's. My mouse droppings in all the cupboards, where, there's a pipe that runs through the cabinets, I'm gonna cock that up. To eliminate, so they can't go from cabinet to cabinet to cabinet, and then I called the overhead door, excuse me. Uh, overhead door guy, he's gonna look at the, adjusting the door, cause when you shut the door on the east side of the garage door. There's a gap about that big, and we may have to replace the rubber. On the, the seat, rubber seal on the bottom of the garage door, he's gonna look at that, and.
So, with that being said, is there, is there such a thing as responsibility of shutting your door, or don't leave mine at home all, open all day long?
Well, I don't know if, I think it's because they're taking in and stuff, cause they're, all their supplies are in there, Mike, I'm not for sure. I'm just going by what the gal is telling me.
The ceiling tanks are gonna get in whether the doors open or shut, it's that time of year.
Right.
I mean, they're out there in a.
She just don't wanna, the cook doesn't wanna get rode up.
Right.
When.
Understandable.
Yeah, yeah, on an inspection, so at least we're, we're, we're gonna look at it, see if we can cure the problem of the garage door.
Back to the senior center quick, about the front step, they said there was that one or two inch lift trying to get in the door.
Correct.
Right, where we, the front door, uh, what were you gonna do to try to?
I'm getting two bids, or I'm getting a couple bids on replacing the concrete, cause the, the concrete has settled. Uh, probably about an inch and a half, and I contacted two, two folks, and they're supposed to be getting me a bid, but I have not received them back yet.
How big an area is this?
Uh, the front door, they said people with walkers and, and all that stuff.
Oh, is it such a thing of the ramp?
No, if, if, if the concrete is poured back to where it's supposed to be, it would be fine. Uh, it's a slab of cement, four foot by eight foot, I'd say.
So it's not something that, I mean, I know we have mudjackers from time to time, the county does, is that something that's feasible?
Well, in the past, we was gonna mudjack this over here, along, and it was. It was like a thousand dollars higher than it was to tear it out and put it in new. And they wouldn't, they wouldn't guarantee it not to settle again.
Well, this is not your project either, this is something that we bid out.
Uh, it's up to you folks. It's only a four by eight slab of cement, the problem is. Is if I do it, I'm gonna have to buy six and a half yards of cement, because that's the minimum you can buy or pay for. Where if we hire somebody to do it, they could pour something else and then just.
I think three yards is the minimum.
Well, like you said. I was told, and that could be them, but I was just told the other day, it was six and a half. Whether it is or not, I don't know. Pardon me?
No, I said the city would do that all the time, where they would just say, these are all the sidewalks we want fixed, and that way. One contractor go around and just get them all prepped, and they can all be ported.
And that's what would happen here, I'm pretty sure, instead of just buying concrete for that.
The only problem is if it's the front door. You don't wanna, you don't want it to get tore out and sit for two or three weeks while they're.
Right.
While they're prepping all the other stuff.
Right. I would make sure, when I get the bids back, I'll make sure that it's, I've done in a timely fashion, okay? Um. Um, did some toilet work down at the hay cab building, it was leaking, uh, fix that, um. Okay, the pender, changed the furnace filters, uh, it has a air handler and, and. I cleaned the filters out of that, washed them off, dried them out, put them back in, um. In, I don't know what the new gal is over there, what she, we'll be cleaning that office out for her.
The pinnerose.
Yes, well, it had. Yeah, she, uh, had a big table in there and some other stuff, and we took, loaded it up and took it down to the, the storage shed.
Did Mike end up not wanting that table?
Mike. Nobody wanted it, it was a big thing, it was like eight foot by four foot, and it was way too. Lynn, the only one I talked to about it was Lynn, and Lynn said it was too big for what they wanted, okay? So we got it out of there and took it down there. Um. The light in the secretary's office was flickering, so, and it's an LED. And they don't make replacement parts for it, you had to buy the whole light, and that light was like five hundred and fifty dollars. So we went local, or not local, but in Dubuque where I get all my stuff, we bought a hundred and twenty dollar light. LED light, put back in, it does not match the one that's in there, but it works good, and they, it didn't seem to bother them. Um. They had a paper shredder that wasn't working right, I tried, I messed with it for a little bit, but I, I could not get it to work. Like it was, and the refrigerator over there keeps leaking water, and we've had it worked on, I believe, two times. It's like twenty years old, and it keeps dripping water out of the front of it, and I'd like to replace it before it ruins the floor and the carpet. The one that's there's now is a real big one, but they don't, they don't need a big one, but they don't want a mini one, they would like a. Just a.
Standard.
Yeah, and if we could do that, I'd get some prices on that, and maybe replace it if that would work with you guys.
Let's get some quote.
Okay.
Is it, is it the leakage, is there a drip pan that's missing underneath?
No, it, it somehow, it comes out the front door on the freezer side of the refrigerator.
Well, it's not sealing tight, it's.
We've replaced the seal, the thiggle on it, um, I don't, I've had, uh. I believe it was Mayberry back in the day twice over there, and it, he, it just, we can't get it to seal up right. I don't know if it's tweaked or what, but we, we did check it out, and I think I also had, um. The, the doctor appliance from Delmer looked at it too. Um, we've replaced the motor in the fan, exhaust fan in the women's restroom. Uh, put a door bumper in the treasurer's office, cause when they came in, it banged the door. Um, I hung signage for the HR office and the IT office. That way Bjorn knows where he needs to go. Sorry about that, Bjorn, um. Um, the water softener, back in the day, we had water softener for the cooling tower, and it's no longer in use, and it's leaking, so. We're taking that out and, you know, we get, take it to the junk, get rid of it, because it's the. I don't know, it's the cylinder, it's leaking, okay, um. Um, I put, I had to put carbon monoxide testers in the boiler room to pass expect, uh, inspection. I got them installed, I did one here and one over at the sheriff's office, um. And we already talked about the hydrant, um, I did oil change in the, um, all three of my vehicles, I still gotta do the big van. Uh, air filters, I had to get a new tire for the NV two hundred, my Nissan, I don't know if I hit something or what. But I kept going flat, and it had a bubble with a little pin low hole in it, and, uh, C and R tires said it was no good. Um. The jail, I had to put a new window air conditioner in the outer office, I couldn't get it to work. Um, and the air conditioner in the back, they're brick walls, so you can't buy the. The exact size, so the one I got is a lot littler, so I'm having Kell and Birch make a little. Thing for the outside, so it looks like it fits instead of just, you know, a hole this big with air conditioner, that big. Um. Had nets in the floor drain in the shower, I took care of that, um. They had an attempted scape over there, and he, uh, damaged the razor wire, which it is, works good. Uh, did take care of that. And went and got salt. And went and got salt and put salt and soft water softener in there, and that's about it.
Well, I'd like to go back to this parking lot across the street a little bit here, I know the post, I'm not calling posts, I don't know what anybody tells them, but I'm gonna call them. Posts are still there, and I know three or four weeks ago, we were here, and you were gonna get with the city, I believe, with Frank and. Uh, as far as getting that cut and getting out of there. So we can get the material in there and packed and asphalt back in it, so the overlay can be done this fall yet, or the coating? Any of that transpire?
Um, I don't remember me ever saying that, but I can do that. I was taking care of the hybrid, and the only reason I was doing that is, uh, is it Todd? The county engineer contacted me for that. But I can do that.
Okay, so, um. I'd like to have some kind of contact with uh Frank as far as when. They're gonna cut that, so we can pull them posts out, and we get secondary roads, pull the posts, I think that was the understanding, if I remember right. And then we were to put some clean rock or material in there and pack it, and then also put asphalt, so. The coat, the whole coating can be completed. Well, I have a question for everyone here, as far as, I know we went through the whole process of having the engineer. Check to see about handicap parking over there. Now, we're probably in need of more handicap parking close to the courthouse. And I'm not really interested with cutting that parking lot up and raising it up a half inch or an inch to make it. Perfect for handicap grade. I mean, it's it's fairly level, but whatever, if it's not, not the exact what we need, it's not what we need. Is there a possibility to put more handicap parking out here? One or two in this parking lot, and and more of us park across the street, beans, it is our parking lot now? Is that feasible? Because they have a way to get in here, this is handicap accessible down through here.
Hmm.
So is it possible to take, I mean, there's two out here now. Obviously, there could be one more. Where we parked, there's a space between for van accessibility between the dumpster and.
Or say there could be.
The other parking lot, but I don't know what the grade is right there either, I know we have two out here, handicap out here.
I don't know that all of them have to be. Van accessible.
Okay, and I don't know that either.
Do, do they have to be flat, because that one over the pentrail?
Less than two percent grade.
Okay, cause that one over the pentrail is in the front of that can't be.
That's pretty.
Well, some of them. Probably some of them are not conforming, but the point is.
I would think that was, we just built it up, but. You know, I'll talk to Mike on that, cause he's the one that designed the the parking lot over there.
Or we also talk to, I mean, talk to the city, can we put another one right out front out here? You know, there's one out here that's almost impossible to get to, but. But uh to put another one right in front of it, we would have another handicap spot. I mean, again, this is all come through permission, since these trial things and da da da, um, what are we gonna need, uh?
I, I know.
I'm not really interested in cutting that parking lot up, and when it looks flat to me, but you know, that's.
That's a significant cost.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking thirty thousand dollars to to raise it up a inch.
If we are gonna put more out here, I think we definitely need to put a bigger sign on our employee entrance door only. There, because.
For handicap or?
No, just so that they know that it, you know, you come out of there and you look, and it's like, oh, that's a shorter route for me, I'm gonna go that way. You get somebody carrying oxygen tanks and stuff like that. Them feats can make differences.
But there is a sign right here.
Before you get to it, yeah, before you get to the sidewalk.
Yes, there's one right where it wise to go to that door.
And it's been what, six thousand years since this is the only entrance?
Where I would like to see a sign, we tried putting a sign out. On the curb side, had the sign made, but we had to ask everybody within two hundred feet of the courthouse. If it was okay if we put that sign in there, and it was decided not to do it.
Boy, city of Macokona.
Yeah.
City of parking home there.
Well, no, it made entrance on the east end of the building, cause what happens is they park here. And then they walk to that door, and then they walk to that door, and by the time they get over here, they're.
Again, maybe it's something we address the city with again personally, and say, you know, is there an exception?
That says main entrance.
Is there a variance, there could be a variance, we could get a variance to say we could put that sign there.
Um, situations like that, and and don't take this long, but I think it would be better if you guys would ask that. Instead of myself, I think it has more clout or, you know.
Any problem with that.
I would appreciate, cause like I said, I had have the sign over in the, in the, in the garage over there. Waiting to be put up, but it was, we had to jump through hoop after hoop after hoop. To get it put up, you know, the size of the sign, how much the sign costs and all that.
Is anyone interested in putting another handicap, one or two out here?
Well, my only thing is right now. The nine months I've been coming here, I haven't seen anybody use the two we got there.
It probably makes more sense to see if we can get another one.
On the east side.
Correct, because just of length of of travel, right, you know.
So then I would like to do it right in front of the courthouse, I mean. Somebody that's capable of walking across the street sure can, if if not tough, then.
I would make it closest to the ramp so they, cause I know that I've had a couple people in in handicap. Uh, in wheelchairs, they had to go clear down here, so I would suggest that we put them both down here close to the, where you get on the.
One is, it would be the next parking spot, basically.
Yeah, I think that would be perfect, yes.
So are you suggesting right in front of the, the one that's?
Yeah, I put two handicap spots back to back.
Are we all agreeable with that?
Yep.
So, do you wanna do that, or I wanna do that?
It's up to you, I don't care, yeah.
One of us can contact.
With Josh, yeah, and just for you to come back on the parking lot, did you, did you talk to John Hop- Hobson about the? The manhole that's there?
I talked to the gal over at the city hall, and then I talked to. Um, the water guy, Jeff Boldenhopper, and they told me that go, when you have it all done, go ahead, you can fill it up.
Now, that's not what John Hobson told me, so I.
Okay.
John Hobson said that we had to keep the manhole covered. He, when they were working on Summit Street, and I was coming back from lunch one day, I pulled over and talked to John, and he said, no. There are things underneath that manhole that you cannot cover it up, so I just wanna make.
We'll double check, but I did, what, um.
Yeah.
The gal over there said we could, she called and checked with Frank, and Frank told her we could bury it.
Mine from John, so I bet.
We'll double check on that.
That would be my only thing is double check, yes, and then. A secondary roads, and you're talking about, you're gonna pull the hydrant out, you're gonna pull the trees out, you're gonna pull, are you gonna take all of that out?
You mean this right here with the hydrants?
That bump.
I think the bump, the curb part's coming out, yes.
Both of them, cause there's plenty two of them there in there.
I would just say the inside is gonna come out, not the outside towards the side.
At some point, somebody told me that curb had to stay there for water running.
Yeah, right.
Control. I just wanted to clarify, it's getting cut.
That in the dirt and the trees and everything, and they get pulled out.
Yeah. Cool, alright.
Uh, updates, attorney, thanks.
Um, we're done in there as of now, uh, until they figure out exactly where they're gonna put. I can't think of her name, just, yeah. So we, I've got the hole all done, painted, matched, uh, turned out decent, um. They want a shelf put in there, up in there, but they don't wanna do it until they figure out where they're gonna put her for sure. Cause she really don't wanna go in the little hole amount. So they're gonna make that the, the, put the table in there in the meeting, and I think she's still gonna be on the outside, and then I think they wanna. Button to open and unopen the door. And don't quote me on that, but I think that's what I heard.
Okay, any other questions for Marty?
And with that, I'll leave it, thank you and have a good week.
Yeah, if you would touch base with either, um, Todd and or.
I will find out with.
When they're gonna saw cut and.
I will get that, try to get that information yet today and get it back you.
Okay, yes, send us an email or something.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Alright, let me find out where I'm at here.
Down to.
Lisa? Um.
Lisa, Lisa Rollicks, or Lori.
Yeah.
So Kelly, are you here with somebody for something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get to her towards the end of my.
Alright, okay.
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written by auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspaper.
Motion second to approve the minutes for the September nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Board proceedings as written, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Uh, I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Motion second to approve the claims in eight hundred, as the amount of eight hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Nine hundred and thirty-seven.
I have eight, eight sheets.
Yep, and I made a correction.
I'm sorry.
As Marty was sitting here. I knew that there was an email that came through for the hundred dollars to pay the city of Macokona. So I emailed Shelley Quickleg, and she didn't put it in, so.
Got that correct.
So it's actually eight twenty-four, nine thirty-seven, sixty.
As presented with a note that there was over five thousand dollars, five hundred thousand. Unfortunately, to the law center and two hundred sixteen to a bridge.
Yeah.
So it's improvements again, so.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents to Rick Widener AIA. Seventeen thousand, twenty-two dollars and thirty-six cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. A thousand and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Chosen Valley. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-five cents to Bill Bruce Builders. Thirty-eight thousand to Rock River Electric, three hundred and eighty dollars to Tri-State Portapotty. Eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars to Gerardi Welding. Twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents to MSS. Three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents to Steinis Electric. Twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents to SSCI. Eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents to Republic Services. For a total cost of four hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Of this total, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Will be paid from the American Rescue Funds and authorized the chair signature and the project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center. For the month ending August thirty first, twenty twenty-three. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order number one dash two to Bill Bruce Builders, Inc. for an additional two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Five hundred and forty-six dollars and six cents to move a wall, complete the expansion, and a control joint in the roof at the LEC.
The move.
Second.
And I suspect this goes along with our expansion project, correct?
Yeah.
It is, these are all change orders.
All those in favor of signing and approving the change order one dash two to Bill Bruce. Builders as presented, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order number two dash two to Stronghold Industries, Inc. For two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to complete the expansion project at the LEC.
The move.
Second.
Motion second to approve the change order number two dash two to Stronghold Industry, presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order number four dash one to Geesler Brothers Company for five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. To complete the expansion project at the LEC.
I know.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the change order number four dash one to Geesler Brothers Company. As presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order number five dash two to Rock River Electric for sixty-six thousand and fifty-six dollars. To complete the expansion project at the LEC.
I know.
Second.
Motion and seconds, approve the change order number five dash two to Rock River, uh, Rock River Electric as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order number six dash one to Midwest Automatic Fire Sprinkler. For three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars to complete the expansion at the LEC.
Second.
Motion second to approve change order number six dash one to Midwest Automatic Fire Fire Sprinkler for. As presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Uh, motion needed.
G.
Yeah, F, okay, you know what, cause I forgot to put something on here, so who made the motion, I'm sorry, who made the motion on F? For the Midwest Automatic Fire Sprinkler for three thousand, okay, sorry about that. Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order to Midwest Construction Consultants for seventeen thousand dollars for construction management services. To complete the expansion project at the LEC, so moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve change order to Midwest Construction as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to authorize chair signature and approve change order to Rick A. Widener AIA for twenty thousand dollars for architect services. To complete the expansion project at the LEC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the change order to Rick A. Widener AIA as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine nine two dash zero nine dash two six dash twenty twenty-three. Certifying delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer. For property tax collection in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
The move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve resolution, resolution number nine nine two dash zero nine. Dash two six dash twenty twenty-three as presented, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
So Kelly is here, we've had some discussion concerning, um, this grant that they are applying for, I know that several weeks ago, there was. An email, and then there was an authorization to have you sign a letter of support for this application.
Good morning.
In visiting with Kelly, and we always like to go back so we can go forward. Um, we noticed that the last time that we were a fiscal sponsor for a grant through the, the community foundation. That we approved it by resolution. And so today, what I would be asking for, Kelly, do you have anything else to say on this?
Well, so actually, what you signed. A month ago was for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Rural Child Care Market Grant. What I'm asking today is.
That's the same.
Sorry.
Oh.
No, it's, it's the same project, but it's for, it's a grant application for the Community Foundation of Jackson County. And it's for the same purpose, it's for the childcare market study. The more funds we can receive, the broader the scope, the more detailed we can come in with the grant itself. I'm sorry, with the study itself, so with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. As a five oh one C six, we were eligible to apply on our own. But for the Community Foundation of Jackson County, we have to be in either a nonprofit or a government entity. Meaning a five oh one C three and not a five oh one C six. So in the past, when JCEA has applied for these grants, they've asked the county to be the fiscal sponsor. So the funds just run through you, I fill out the reports, I do everything, but you get the check, you give it to us, and then we deposit it, and then we use it. So I have a resolution that basically just says you agree to that, and you agree that. Again, like you did before, that childcare is. An issue that really needs to be addressed, we need to have a plan, we need to know where we're going, and we need to make something happen, so that's why.
So that's your resolution, nine ninety-three dash, so I need a motion to approve resolution dash nine ninety-three dash zero nine dash twenty-six dash twenty twenty-three. Approving Jackson County Economic Alliance Application to the Community Foundation of Jackson County for a childcare study.
The move.
Okay.
A motion and second to approve resolution nine nine three dash zero nine dash two six dash twenty twenty-three as presented. Any further discussion? So basically, we are past here, we have done this for other entities in the same way.
Yes.
Is there an amount attached to this grant that we're applying for?
We're applying for five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars, okay, there's a really nice article in the P H this morning on East Dubuque, new. Childcare uh facility that's gonna house, could house up to some hundred and eighty children, am I correct?
Yeah, in the Midline Building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, this is in East Dubuque, this is a brand.
Oh, okay, no, I get.
They were in a, uh, older building over there, and then their lease expired, or their. They were in a, uh, older building over there and then their lease expired or they're booted out one of the two and then this, uh, I think. Private individual built this, uh, building, it was impressive. Like a hundred, they have a hundred and thirty-six, uh, children now and it can get expanded. Or if they accommodate a hundred and eighty-something. Yeah, definitely in need, so. All those in favor of passing that resolution, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
With the passing of that resolution, then I need a motion to approve the chair signature on the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque. Nine five oh one C three fiscal sponsorship agreement.
Motion second to approve the chair signature on the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque nine five oh one. C three sponsorship agreement, say aye.
Also, I wanna just thank Lisa and everybody. Because she's, she literally saved my butt, like this was yesterday and she looked in the past and she said, hey, this is what we've done. Had she not done this yesterday, I probably would have found it, I was literally working on it this morning, I probably would have found it. After your meeting and then I wouldn't have been able to have the necessary documentation and we wouldn't have been able to apply. So I appreciate that she did what she did to. I know, but I, I just appreciate that, I wanted to let you all know that she, I felt like she really.
Everybody, we'll get all the signatures necessary and I'll drop it off in Patty's afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thanks Kelly.
Thank you. And just my final thing here is, is Luann has stepped out this morning. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at seven thirty AM, there is a community needs assessment. Follow-up of Zoom for all of you, if you wish to attend that, at nine AM, there is an Irish meeting in Dubuque or Zoom for NIN. At four PM tomorrow, there is a work session on Homebase Iowa with the VA Commission. Anybody is, is, uh, can go to that meeting at four o'clock. Six o'clock is the Municipal League here in Makokona for Mike. Every, nobody has anything on Thursday or Friday, Saturday, of course, is an open house at the former Welcome Center from ten till one. On Monday, it looks like that's a tentative destination Iowa, I guess I haven't heard if we're meeting or not, yeah, I.
Not have anybody confirmed that.
Josh and the Cooker to Leadership and we mentioned that and he said that the DNR. The DOT, it's the DNR that's being the hangup now, not the DOT. Cause I was asking about the bridge and all that stuff and he says it's not, the hangup isn't quite what we, what we thought it would be, so. Uh, but there is progress, so.
So I guess we'll wait and see if that materializes or not, but other than that, we're back here next Tuesday at ten o'clock for a meeting. With that, that is all that I have for the board.
I'll probably come over early, I've got, um, a meeting at six thirty anyway and then also. So I have the Municipal League is over here in Makokona this week. And I seen pictures on the open, uh, the Welcome Center, look amazing. Thank you Lisa.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, on our agenda yet. We have eliminated Luann, correct? Well, that wasn't the right word? So Lori Relling, our Jackson County zoning administrator, and she brought her sidekick Ruth weather today. Good morning ladies.
Everyone needs a sidekick, right? That she is, and she was a great assistant too. I haven't told her that yet today. Um, so. Do you guys need another copy of the questionnaire that they were sending, actually a little bit official? Okay, so, oh, I do have, oh, I have what I need, yeah, everyone has one, it's the two-page one, not the three-page. You guys have the two-page one?
You talking front and back, or you talking front, back and front?
Front, front back.
You got front, back and then a little extra.
There was an updated one, um, we made some changes that. We made some changes. Just the words on the bottom of the last question. So this is the questionnaire that has been put together by UCIN. About sending to all the department heads in our county. And we had a list of the department heads that was part of that even, but where they, they would be disseminated to. So basically, each of you guys would have the opportunity to take the survey. But only, they're only asking that it be sent to the department head, it's not every member of every office. And it'd be a confidential survey where the answers would be.
Is this the same one we received by, um, email or no, there's an updated?
It's slightly, like the bottom line is the only thing that basically.
So we can just click on it and do it online, correct?
This is an example, this isn't, this hasn't been approved yet. But yeah, we would send it out that way. And we're just asking for your permission because basically it's gonna state that the Jackson County Board of Supervisors would like your input.
You're looking for action?
Yes, please.
Motion second to approve the confidential questionnaire, um, for county elected officials as presented and department heads. For the comprehensive plan, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Okay, so we're still talking about comprehensive plan a little bit, right? I just gotta tell you guys, we're kind of pleased, we're, we're, um, last check was yesterday, a hundred and ninety-eight surveys.
Looks good, we got input.
Yeah, um, we had twenty-seven students. Most, we thought we were gonna have fifty, cause that's how many were in the classes, but some of them chose to maybe do something else on their PC than take the survey. Um, but so we have twenty-seven, we had two demographics where we weren't touching. Um, so now we do have eighteen and under, we have twenty-seven respondents, which was seventeen percent. And then we're still that nineteen to twenty-six or something like that. We, so now it's like some effort needs to go out there too, so. That might be Mike's, what Mike recommended, it's like I need to hang out at the bars more often.
I didn't say that, I thought that was.
Oh, excuse me, those establishments. But no, so, but no, we're, we're pleased. That I think two hundred was viability. Okay, that was the two hundred, but eight hundred is still the goal, eight twenty, okay. So you guys ready for your work session? Okay, whatever.
Your work session part of the meeting? Yeah, we're ready. I didn't know it was a big part of our meeting, but.
That's how the agenda came to be. Anyway, um, are you guys good with the spreadsheets or do you guys need the? A copy of?
I need a copy. I don't think I had a spreadsheet in my.
I want, you know, the, you know, the. I looked at one, it looked like they hadn't done anything. And well, actually it looked like they took off the roof off the makeshift building. The other one actually looks, I mean. From Apache Trail, it looks.
Yeah, go to the backs.
I know, but.
I drove around Metros, I got lost in Leisure Lake.
I drove around, I turned right there on Cherokee and I looked at the backside and. Yeah, there was a cabin there, so you have a cement slab and a, like a little garage thing, but. I mean.
One at twenty-four hundred twenty, yeah. Two zero four zero zero. I thought was o- okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Because even when you looked in there, things were lined up. When I looked in the windows from the road, what I've seen of the tires that was lined up. Yeah, there's tires in there, but they were lined up along the wall, you know, things like that, so. That one I didn't feel was an issue. The other address you gave us. That I had issues with.
I think the car kind of dumped. The last time I drove by.
Yeah, there's like abandoned vehicles, there's. Unloaded, unkept. Areas, there's.
That's not been our focus though.
I know, but just abandoned vehicles and.
Enclosure, I don't know, but. So, uh, since, since you kind of mentioned it, there, there's some that made some the. No effort, I wrote it on my hand so I could say it, that was what you guys told me, only. Follow-up with the ones with no effort, which we started doing it Friday, I ran into a stop and point, needed help from Carolyn Grant. She came in yesterday, but then there was another problem and got kicked back, so hopefully we'll have that out today. Um, but there. And I gotta be careful of hearsay gossip and rumors, just because we know the nature of that area. Um, there's one area, there's one property in particular that did make some effort. They, they're keeping their grass mowed, which has not been our issue. They cleaned up some of the stuff and now they're stacked neatly along in a row. And he, uh, well. Then it's like, well, basically they can't do anything because it's neat now, but it's still tires, metal. Um. Unregistered vehicles. But it's neat and that's not the way the ordinance reads and I did have Doc John Brackey out with me last week. Assistant County Attorney. And then to you guys' mission twenty-four hundred, um, he, boy, he read our ordinance, that building's in violation of our nuisance ordinance.
So just so I'm, we're talking Leisure Lake here, this is. I didn't know if I missed something there.
No. But I just ran with it, cause John opened it up, so, all right.
Just to go, I kinda agree with that, twenty-four hundred, I really don't have a problem with.
Okay, but it's in violation of the nuisance. As far as the building itself.
Then there's about fifty percent of all properties that in rural Jackson County that are in violation of this.
I know, so we might need to have another work session on that. So, all right, so under the two thousand twenty-four, the recommendations. You can see comparing that to the two thousand twenty-three recommendations that there are some considerable increases. And can we just go through it? Okay, I think that's probably our best way to approach it. Comparing the other entities that have it, we're, we're. Um, Jones County is. Um. A hundred, we're one fifty. Dubuque County's, uh, is gonna be one fifty for a single family structure. Um, there, and then Clinton County is a hundred.
And you're proposing two hundred?
Well, we were, I, I would say let's stick with that one fifty. Okay, um, and the reason, I know City Makokona is a lot higher. But I don't have a problem with the one fifty for the fact that whether it's. A hundred thousand dollar house or a five hundred thousand dollar house, it doesn't take any more effort or any extra, anything extra. For those, um. Well, lesser in Leisure Lake or up in Dresslers, because then there's all kinds of work. Trying to find out what we have to do to make it work, because the lots just aren't big enough to do what they wanna do and most of the time. But, um, and then two, let's go back to the seventy-five dollars on the. Um, accessory permit, if that's okay for you guys. All right, and, um.
You mean the accessory permit? Okay, you're good with that?
And I'd also look back at the, um. The. Addition to the home for principal use, I'd say let's keep that the same. After we've looked at the other, other counties. And then keeping in mind, one of the conversations when I've talked to Tom down in Clinton County. And, um, with the girls up in Dubuque County. Dubuque County is actively looking to make changes, cause they know their fee schedules are too low.
So just understand, we can address this, I mean, uh, uh, review this every year, correct?
Oh, sure, cause we do have a resolution. And, um.
Add the addition to accessory use structure.
Keep it the same as the two thousand twenty-three.
You didn't have one.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, excuse me, yes, that would be a new, yes, please. So what falls under that? That'd be like the machine shed where they're adding. A lean-to or, yeah, but if they were adding a dwelling to the machine shed. They'd be, um, adding a principal use structure. If it was on the outside, if it was inside, it's almost no harm, no foul. All right, so we're good with that. Blood plane permits, um. We are higher than the other counties.
Currently?
Currently.
How much work's involved in that, sounds like enough, but.
A lot, um, a lot of work, um, however, it doesn't require any public notifications. Or any printings in the paper.
So when we, when we're doing these permits, if they're gonna apply for a permit, can we not? Include if there's an expense for the public notice that that would be part of addition to the fee?
Yeah, um, how? When we get.
I mean, why would the county pay for a public notice if that's for their benefit?
That's right, and we're, how about we discuss that when we get down to where those are, we're, we're, we're almost there. So.
So they're gonna stay the same?
I would willing to keep those the same, yes, that's my recommendation. Yeah, there are a lot of work, I mean, there's a lot of time and a lot of handholding that goes on, but it's still part of our daily job.
Well, we are serviced.
Yes, yes, absolutely. All right, the Board of Adjustment, that's where we get into, um. The public notices, Ruth put together, um, cost analysis. And for, if we have one case going to either the Board or the Commission. We're probably gonna be between two hundred and eighty-seven and three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, something like that. For the fees and that doesn't count her and I are normal, you know, eight, eight to five work or part-time hours here. Um, it doesn't count for printing?
That would count for.
Okay, and for any of the mileage that's accrued by the Board of Adjustment or the Commission, uh, and then there's sometimes there's. Well, there's mileage to out to a site, if they're reviewing it before the case. Or when they're reviewing it before the case and then, um, mileage to here and we have some there what? Twenty, thirty dollars? Just because we're on the very edge of the, you know, very edge of the county, so. So those fees are, that includes the, the public notice, mileage. And the stuff that we have to pay. And we're, other taxpayers are paying for that if. Other counties are lower. And that's where cut, talking to Dubuque County, they would like to capture the fees. Um, so Dubuque County is two fifty. For Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission. Well, higher than what we've been, higher than what we've had, right? Oh, excuse me, that was Jones County, I apologize, that was Jones County. And then zoning commission for Dubuque County is two fifty and Board of Adjustment is one fifty.
But it's plus the cost.
Plus the cost of certified letters and they also do recordings of their Board of Adjustment actions.
So can we charge a fee and then also charge for the certified letters and the public notice?
Yeah, we don't. To me, they do it after the. Uh, to me, they do it after the case, which I'm like, you're sending them a bill. And ask them to pay something, gosh, it's easier just to get it done in advance. And if the fee's not paid, you don't move forward, because there's really nothing.
Cause if they, if you do everything and then send them a bill. They have it all done.
Right, and then if they didn't, if the case didn't go as they wanted, they're not gonna be as likely to wanna pay that. Pay that.
And can you tell me the average Board of Adjustments we have per year?
Probably six. No, probably six, but even though in February, we did have eight cases, because February and March. It was, it was one of those, we had eight cases go before the Board of Adjustment. However, keeping that in mind, volume. Decreases the cost, because the, for one notice in the paper, it costs. You can quote the fees probably, well Lisa can probably. It doesn't cost as much, yeah, because they're only adding a couple extra lines for each case, so it kind of balances out.
And your mileage for your people coming in would. Kind of be divided by the eight cases versus one case.
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
But that's an exception to the rule that eight, that does.
I was thinking the same thing for some reason, and maybe, you know, again, reviewing it next time around, I'd say. You know, we're still losing money or we're breaking even or we. We still are a public service.
Cause we can analyze the cost.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Okay, so. Minor subdivisions review, current is a hundred dollars. Um, we had. Thought about increasing that fee up to two hundred. There's, there can be a lot of work in front of those, but not necessarily, um. The the part that's the time sucker on any of the plats of, uh, well, the simple, the, um. Major of them, the time suckers are when you. Get a developer, somebody that changes their mind, or if there's a mistake on the plat, and you have to review it five different times. And a new, a new plat, new document, Lisa can attest to that. You know, you, it's like, oh, we're gonna do fifteen lots, they present it, we review it, get everything done. And then it's like, whoop, we just cut it down to thirteen lots.
You approved it, then it appears a change to it, they should pay again.
I'll redraw fee, resumetal plats of minor, major subdivision, there's a new fifty dollar fee for every review. You know, I I think, cause it's not like you get, you gotta revalidate the whole thing.
It starts from the beginning, especially in the assessor's office. Cause they have to go through that whole entire legal all the way down and just make sure what changed or what didn't and make. Sure that there's not a error with the change.
Okay, so we're still on minor subdivision, do you propose to leave that the same? Is that what I heard you say, no?
We could. I would say yes, if we would have a. Resumetal plat fee, but let's get some input from Lisa on that too. Cause we've had an opportunity to talk a little bit about that.
Talking just minor though, right?
Well, let's talk minor and re- resumetal.
Yeah, those are very labor intensive processes, um, you know, we had a major subdivision here. Part of the problem is that surveyors want to send stuff here to the courthouse and have us look at it before they submit it. So they're kind of trying to go around it, so to speak, and again, what happened years ago is that. Um, they kept submitting this plant and submitting this plant, we kept looking at it. And finally, the last time it came in, you know, we kind of looked at it, we didn't think anything had changed, well, it did. What got filed and what we thought was gonna happen were two different things. So that's why, I mean, when they resubmit, they can resubmit for errors that we have found. So, you know, but again, you have to all start over, you have to relook at everything and make sure that everything conforms to Iowa law. And that's time consuming, so.
So is that pushing their work off on you guys?
Um, somewhat, yes.
See, I I'm cool with, I I'm cool with the resumetal fee because. Same as the. The fee, it's just, you know. Maybe that would cause them to be a little bit more deliberate in what they're doing.
What they're, you know, I mean, I can't come in here and change my mindset six every time, guy.
We did, one of our majors. One of our major subdivisions, um, he's, they resubmitted five times, yeah. And one was like the. Three o'clock on the Friday.
They even were approved of anything, or they started and realized that they had to change for size wise or for grading or for.
I'm trying to remember, Lisa, maybe you can help me, or Ruth.
They took a couple of lots out.
They did, but.
Last ones up on the hip?
Yeah, it was.
I think they started like with fifteen and ended up with like. Twelve or, yeah.
Something, um, but I'm trying to remember if they did all that changes, or if there was even some before the, the final approval. Um, but there was a lot of moving pieces for a while. But.
Okay, so, uh.
Keep it at a hundred and then have the resumetal fee?
Be the same.
Okay.
Well, is a hundred appropriate? So with what kind of everybody else is doing, do we know?
For a subdivision.
I mean, we've been a hundred. And oh, one, it was a hundred.
Yeah, so subdivisions in Jones County are two fifty. They say they don't have any dip distinction between minor and major here. You know.
We see that volume of. For the major development in Jackson County, we see more minor development.
For the prelimi- preliminary plat and then the final plat. Three twenty five plus a twenty, twenty dollars for each additional lot.
Do we go somewhere in the middle there between the hundred near? Two hundred you proposed, maybe a one fifty or something.
That would be agreeable on my end.
Since we've kind of been. Yes.
And where am I seeing the resumetal fee?
For minor major plats, I guess I would say that would be. Another fee, uh, you can't say fifty bucks or a hundred bucks, it would be. You know. If the process is exactly the same.
Um, no, yes and no, on the review side, but the, um, for. On the minor, yes, it's, it's the same, but. For the most, yeah, it's the same for the most part, I'm trying to think, is there anything less involved, other than we know what we're looking at? So we're already oriented to the property. So we, we kind of know what's happening, so it's.
For either one, major or minor.
Well, minor. Let's stick with minor right now, because major has a few other caveats, like a public notification. Um, when it goes to the commission. I I would, I I wouldn't wanna charge an additional. Full fee.
Drawn it though, it seems like a complete start over to me, but I.
Well, some of the resumitals are. They accidentally, instead of section sixteen, have section six written in there. Or they switched northwest and northeast. It's just a a legal description error.
This would be the actual surveyor that's made an error on. Yeah, and unfortunately, I will tell you, one of the reasons why we have our our platting ordinance is because of the high rate. Of plants that were being rejected because of errors. At one point years ago, we were at fifty percent.
Okay, we, we're not paying for somebody else's errors, by the way, so then we should charge them if there's an error.
Well, the problem is, is the surveyor's gonna turn around, charge the plat, you know that as well as I do.
That's their baby, that was their fault, I don't, I know that's hard to get a surveyor too, but.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are very simple, but. I know Janelle has to start over, me, I don't have as much, I don't read through the wiggles and all that, so I don't, there's not as much burden on me as there is. On, on the assessor's office.
All right, recommendation?
Day should still be a hundred and fifty and then the.
Fifty dollar review?
Yeah.
It's fifty dollar review and now.
The for the resubmitted. What do you think, Lisa? Cause I know you were kind of not like, not in agreeance.
It's not that, I I mean, I know that in the end, who's gonna pay, the person that makes the mistake is not gonna pay.
Right.
So we've said to say.
No matter what we do, I mean, if we, if we charge, make them pay this fee.
Yeah.
It's not coming to the person who made the mistake. And if we turn around and charge it to the person who made the mistake, they're gonna turn around and dump it to the.
Yeah.
So again, the volume of them is minimal, per se.
Minor and major subdivisions?
Well, I'm talking minor, yeah, for.
Because the bulk of our surveying is probably more class of survey. I mean, that's really where we see the bulk of of air.
So is it something that we can take kind of under consideration and review it till next year and see?
I think that's fair.
So we got the hundred fifty plus the fifty, that's where we're at.
And then mine, our major subdivisions for the preliminary plat. There is a lot of work involved. And then there's public notices, zoning board, or excuse me, zoning commission meeting.
So a major is considered over how many?
Um, over four. Four, four and over.
Okay, so I I don't see an issue with that, uh, the four hundred dollars, that's one of their minimal expenses, I would say to, uh, major subdivision.
Yeah. It's still higher than, um, the other counties, but knowing.
So do you wanna go three hundred and ten per lot?
No.
No?
Um. Jones County is three twenty five.
Okay.
And twenty.
So four hundred is cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then. For the preliminary, oh, for the final, okay.
Her change she wants is just to go to four hundred instead of two fifty plus ten per lot.
Oh, that, there's a switch, there's a. Minor.
Two fifty plus ten per lot, you suggest.
But then the next one says four hundred plus twenty five.
Excuse me, the, the two fifty and the three hundred plus the ten per lot, the ten per lot is actually, should be moved down to the. To the final plat.
It's just. Used to be two fifty.
Yeah. And then the other one was three hundred plus. Um, ten dollars per lot.
So you said Jones is three fifty?
Jones County is three twenty five and an extra twenty per lot. Dubuque County is. A hundred and sixty. Um. The preliminary is two hundred plus ten dollars a lot, the final plat. One through four lots is a hundred and sixty, five through ten is two hundred. And the final plat of twenty one or more. They're missing us. They are, and they agreed, the girls up there knew that's something they wanna do and they just haven't been able to get to it. So.
So are you, are you, are you? Recommending four hundred or three fifty is in the ballpark?
Either one would be agreeable, on you're still on the, um, preliminary plat or, okay. Three fifty, that's agreeable. Because that's still covering.
Again, we're gonna review these not ever twenty years anymore.
In the final plat? We're gonna do the four hundred plus twenty five per lot? Any old inspection fees?
And news of the inspection fees come from the county engineer's office, which they have, um, been waiting in the past.
So I can see that at some point they're gonna do a piece of the plat.
Well. We're gonna go back to something. I, I'm a great, I, I agree with that.
And twenty per lot, did you say that that's what?
I had twenty five written there, but if you choose to go lower, that's.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, cause the same amount of work probably for four lots and fifteen lots, but if you get to fifteen lots and there's twenty five excessive. Twenty is fine with me.
Okay, so three fifty and twenty per lot, okay, got it. And we had talked about the. Um, redrawing, resubmitted for resubmitted plats. Um, in a previous zoning. Resolution for fees, that was split. In half. Half going to the assessor's budget and half going to the general fund. Is that? What would you see, how would that would work? And no, um, it's not being. Um, it went back quite a ways, um. Thousand ten and then it was eliminated. Well.
It was eliminated in ten.
Yeah, and started in ten. There was two different resolutions.
Like talked about and then it's like, I can't do it.
Well, true.
The hard thing with the resolutions is that the only thing that they would show was what got updated or changed, it didn't show. What was still being charged, so sometimes it's kind of hard to know. Like what the charges were, I don't know.
Which is a good reason why what we try to do in here going forward is we need to eliminate the, the original and then adopt a new. That's why we changed kind of our process, cause it's cleaner, and you understand, you can see, so.
You know where to go back and look.
That's right, so we eliminate this resolution and we adopt this resolution.
Yeah.
That's, that was the goal, yeah.
That's what we do now, try and make things clean, so, yeah, good trade off.
Okay. All right, so. Um. So you don't wanna add in there anything about a, a split between assessor fund and. Oh, excuse me, yeah.
I mean, if you think it's. Efficient way of doing it, it sounds like it's. More work again, but who, who has the whole, most work involved or who should get paid? You know, if it goes back into the general fund, it's.
I think it was eliminated for a reason.
Otherwise, where did it go, to assessors?
Yeah.
They get a part of that.
Yeah, they're their own fun, yeah, um, but we can just not add that caveat, okay? We won't add that caveat, um. Currently, communication towers are three hundred.
Keeping that at fifty then?
Yeah, we had.
I mean, you're not.
They're for the redrawn, resubmitted.
Right.
Been that since oh one?
No, it hasn't, no, it was eliminated in ten.
But in oh one, it was.
Excuse me, yes.
Is that? Isn't that where you were just stating that every time?
That was there.
Kind of going through the whole thing again?
That was the redrawn, yeah, there was fifty for us and it wasn't split. It was the regular plats of survey, excuse me, as I read through there. That was the fifty fifty split, which. We didn't recommend a fee for the regular plat surveys. Are there's our work involved? Yeah, is that just daily work? Um, that would be for you to decide, so for the regular plans of surveys, there is not a fee. So that would be like Mike wanting to split off. A, a snit to sell of his property to sell to his neighbor. Well, even a tenth of an acre just to, to make some, something right for the neighbor, yeah. Um, or, yeah, or if you're selling on five acre, you wanna split off five acres, that would be the, um. The regular plat of survey.
I'm kind of okay with not having that, but I'm wondering if this fifty dollar fee shouldn't be changed. But again, is that kind of regular? Regular work?
It, it has to get, when a plat comes in, it has to go through and be checked to make sure that it needs, you know, all the requirements and. And then, you know, it has to go through the GIS system, make sure that they can get on beacon and. And then, you know, it has to go through the GIS system, make sure that they can get on Beacon and, and to get all of that information. Um, you know what, we do a lot of plats of surveys, um, and it doesn't matter if it's a, a ten foot boundary line adjustment or. You know, what's really happening now is because we're not selling land at five hundred dollars an acre, there's a lot of people that they are surveying their entire farm out. For, to get an accurate acreage for a potential sale. There's a lot of work, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, again, we don't wanna make it so it's burdensome for a, a developer either, or someone that's improving, you know?
Well, I'm just, I'm kinda questioning, we sat here at the be- beginning of this when we were talking about the major and minors. You know, that when they make a change and bring it back in. So is that fifty dollars enough for that?
Go seventy-five.
Type of deal versus, you know. Since we didn't go off her. Initial fee.
Yeah, um. Or is that something we can revisit next time we did it, keep it fifty now and, and maybe revisit when we do it a year from now? Cause I'm just worried that that might be excessive, I mean, we've, you wanna, you didn't wanna be burdensome, but we had a guy resubmit five times.
But how much more work is that putting on to you, especially if it's a major?
Yeah, and more, and more for the assessor's office than probably me and Lisa.
I know that it's more work, but it's still in the scope. Our job, so.
Oh, it is.
Do it five times, you gotta post that in the paper five times?
No, because as long as they're not changing anything, you know, they're not changing sections township range, they're not changing. The whole fifty-six acres that it included, you know, no, we do not have.
That's a major part of our cost, it's a cost minimum, so I don't think if you've been. Past that expense along as far as you'd have to pay for the public notice.
Which we did.
We don't know if it's gonna be this long or this long.
Right, which, which we did in some of those increased fees, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, you know, and well, like you said, it's all work, so do we even need to charge the extra fifty dollars for the extra review?
Well, if they're turfing some of their.
I mean, you, that makes them hold them, having a fee there makes them hold themselves a little bit accountable.
I, well, I do agree with that, and then maybe we wouldn't get some things back in.
You know, may, they might think about, well, do I, do I really want the thirteen or do I want the fifteen?
It's hard to do on a case by case, you know, you got policy and procedure, it's hard to do on a case.
Yeah, and then.
There's real different reasons for.
We do have some, we have some really great surveyors in the area, and not all of them do a lot of work in our county. And I think you probably know where I'm gonna go with this, but I don't mention any names, of course. We have a guy that's doing a lot more work in our county now in the last nine months than he's probably ever done. And when his, like, earlier in the year, we'd send his, even his regular plants of survey back. Two times, maybe three, because he was still getting his groove for our county. So it took him a while, but now he's one of those guys where. He's, he knows what we're asking for, and he's getting through the first time around. And it was a learning curve, I mean, be a great surveyor, he just hadn't done as much work.
It's a educational process with anything we do, so.
And working with different counties is.
I'm right.
Well, that's, he's trained, I think he's there. Uh-huh.
Yeah. I shouldn't have said that.
I can find this part of the video and make sure she can go to it.
But stick with the fifty then and revisit it.
Okay. All right.
You did see what I posted yesterday, right? Behind the man who thinks he wears the pants, the woman that told him what pants to wear.
There's some truth to that sometimes, but anyway, are we ready to go to communication towers?
Sure.
All right, so. I haven't issued one in a year. In what four months I've been here, I don't know when the last time a communications tower went up.
Like what we just did?
Oh.
No, no, I'm saying.
Oh, the Met Tower, yes, excuse me, but a regular, like, when I think communication, my mind goes to cell tower. Okay, so sorry.
TT or what?
Yeah, the US Cellular, um, T-Mobile, whatever.
Mo- basically, I would say they have their coverage down almost pinpointed to, they're probably done with. Things change, but their coverage is, I mean. Fifteen years ago, when they come through on ours, that, I mean, they hit it pinpointed where the dead spot was, period.
And what we're seeing from them now, I mean, it's been twenty years since some of these and old longer, that a lot of these towers have been there. So now we're seeing the refurbishing, so they're replace, replacing the coax, replacing the antennas, replacing. What other things that they need to, which there is, they don't need a permit, a zoning permit for that, cause they're not.
Should be maintenance to me, but.
They do not need a permit, they're not changing the height, which would require permit, and the only time I'm requiring a permit for those. Is that they're changing the footprint, so if they're adding a bigger, um, utility.
Permit for a roof?
No, sir, not in, not in the county. Not in the county.
I needed one to tie my bathroom from my shed into the septic. Doesn't matter if I go in the building or in the house, right, it's still the same, wow, but I had to get a permit.
For what?
Had to get a permit to tie my septic from the new structure into the.
Oh, okay, yeah, but far as a roof siding windows.
May, is maintenance.
Yeah, um, roof county, um, excuse me, roof, windows siding for the county. No, you do not need a zoning permit, but that's the county, don't, and don't confuse that with anything inside of a corporate's. In corporate state limits, cause some do require that, but in our county, no.
So what are you anticipating here for the communication tower, I, I mean?
Anticipate seeing many, um, other than maybe some Met, Met Towers down the road.
When was this three hundred set up?
We don't know. Probably ninety-seven or before.
Okay, so the communications tower, then down below, you got the WECS, to me, that's the.
One Energy Conversion System, which are we ready to address that, or do we wanna? We wanna do that at a later date, is what I would have thought. Yeah, that is what I would have thought. And.
So with eight hundred, back to the communications. They number it where we wanna be.
Where do you guys wanna be? Okay, we can knock that down. What's, what's, what are you thinking? Pardon me?
What are the other counties?
Okay, Clinton's three hundreds for their communications tower. I don't see anything broke down for either Dubuque or.
Do they have any type of tower or Jones?
I just don't wanna discourage cell towers, communication towers, cause I would say we have a lot more dead spots. Than others, so I don't know if I wanna discourage that by doubling the fee of surrounding counties.
The, um, Dubuque County, I see where they just have straight towers are two fifty.
Here in all their fees, I'm like, we're already high. Like I say, depending on what cells ever she got, whether you're involved with or you're going up by Zingle, there's dead spots all over Jackson County. You know, I would like to most encourage people to come and put a few more towers up to kinda eliminate the communication gaps that we're having.
They dig down fifty feet, start form concrete, this permit is pretty minimal to them, so.
Able to say that the expense and the income they get off them too is, is pretty significant.
We raised it a little bit, but not.
I mean, yes, it's called administrative expenses or whatever it might be, yeah.
Yeah, um, cause there is, um. Uh, like I said, I haven't done one, but I'm very confident there's notification fees that would go.
And the home farm occupation or industry?
That's just an application, that's not ones that have to go through the board of adjustment on top, it wouldn't include. Um, a board of adjustment fee if they needed to go, this is just the, the permit, some of them.
Home occupation industry that. Don't apply. Business, is there?
Well, we. We would ask them to get in compliance with the, um. With the application and the permit to get them out of violation and then to, um. We had talked about the, the fee. Or any, any non-compliance, we have that. Right, all application fees will double if the project was started before the application was applied for or issued, but, um. But no, we didn't have that spelled out everywhere that it should have been, so we wanted to make sure that was broke out. Um, for those fees. For those application fees.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem either one of them, so.
Cause it would be treated like an accessory. Building, the same, all right, so you're good with those? Okay. And then are you good with what's written about all application fees will double if the project was started before the application was applied for or issued?
Well, I certainly think there should be a penalty, um, I guess, you know, you can, everybody can come to and say we didn't know.
Well, there's a lot of that.
But I know, I get it, but is, did they really not know or agents?
I was gonna say, but, but some of that you're gonna get, those that didn't know and are just trying to get away with it, but then you're gonna get some of those that. Truly didn't know.
Maybe you and Eric can elaborate and have a conversation that can be put out in the publication to help people explain what some of the stuff is for.
Okay. Well, speaking of.
Get my copy.
Speaking of that, um, I have kinda talked about it. Would you guys be opposed if I tried to get an editorial column, maybe once a month or once a quarter? To talk about certain things that are of concern?
I think an update is certainly warranted, um, as to, yeah, I don't know, but the next one says, well, I don't read debate with.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what you're gonna run into is, is it reaching the people?
I will say, we have gotten more phone calls and more people stopping and asking if they need a permit to do things. So I feel like there's more maybe discussion going on in the community as to, oh, I might need a permit to do that. Like, we've just, we've had a lot more phone calls and a lot more.
What time period?
Um, probably in the last three months. We've had people calling and asking and stopping in and saying, hey, I live out in the country, do I still need a permit to put up my shed? You know, or I'm gonna do this, do I need a permit, so I do think there's a little more discussion in the community as to.
Discussion is good.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have. I didn't know and, um.
My realtor told me I didn't have to.
That was pointed, yeah.
And then, uh, I mean, but.
He smiled when I said it.
And but, you know, I mean, the point is they did know and then they giggle about it or whatever, but. I mean, it depends on what it is, too. If it's a. Major structure, it's a add-on for.
Well, cause you get some of those, like, the whole farm thing, isn't it? Like a certain acreage. So if I got twenty acres, I gotta get one, but if I got.
Production, yeah, I mean, do you have income?
It says forty acres and then there's another caveat, um, but sometimes, there's some. Excuse me, some smaller parcels, smaller tracts that can be.
Income?
Very high income, you have your person, um, that's doing all truck farming, grows mushrooms. Um, I'm gotta do your counting one in my head. I mean, they're, and they live off farmer's market and direct sales that people come out to their very small acreage. That they're actually home studying and, and raising the sustainable. I mean, they're supporting their family, uh-huh, and then you have, yeah, then you have.
Doing a cattle feed lot, you don't need you date acreage.
No, you don't, you're gonna have the income, right, and that's, that comes down to, you know, good judgment.
So.
Yeah, and I would, yeah, and I've had one that I had to think about, and it's like. We did a farm at the same time, one that, well, we've done some that are less than forty acres, but for good reason, I mean, yeah, for good reason. And, um, there was something I was going at and got sidetracked, but I don't remember what it was.
I mean, it's always a case where everybody has their own. Process and thought processes where it's property taxes and such, but you know, it's, it's.
But, oh, I know where I was going, I had a gentleman in my, like, in my office yesterday, we talked for quite a while. He bought a property ten years ago so he could fix cars. And the seller was, um, had told him that it was dual zone and that he could. Do that operation, that's why they bought what they did, well, it's not dual zone.
Old buyer beware.
Yeah, it was, it, um, so now he's, so, he's, well. Well, there's a lot of that that goes on. I know, but anyway, he's gonna be applying for. The, his special ex, uh, or his home industry in A one, so, but there's peo- there's several out there, they just didn't know. And, um, so we try to work with them, we're gonna get him into compliance and move forward.
Good.
So, all right.
We got through it?
I think we have gotten through it, and hopefully we don't come up with anything that concerns us after we start typing it back up. For the resolution, should we have that ready for you guys for next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. I mean, we're all in agreement here so far.
So these subdivision ones and all that, are we adding in publication fees, or is what we went to?
I think we're gonna catch it. Okay, we're catching it, see, minor subdivisions don't have the publication fees, whereas major. Preliminary does, major final does.
Okay.
They both have publications. Okay. Okay, I thank you guys.
Okay, appreciate it, coming in. Working through it?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, and, um, yeah, I didn't feel good about it last week and I feel a lot better about it now.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, um, I still have a work session scheduled at eleven, that, that, that'll go, correct? And that didn't get taken off. Okay, I did have conversation, I know we have our. They kept property. At least coming up at the end of September. I did talk to Jane personally, and, uh, she didn't really realize it, but she was gonna pull it and go through it and see if there was. Major changes, now she said she couldn't make it this week, she's glad to come next week with Ronell, if Ronell got time. To sit and kinda explain the whole, I said, we have students supervisors, would like some info on it, and I'm not. I, I mean, I don't know enough about it to give the info, so she's willing to come next week, she couldn't come this week, but, um, so does our lease just? Keep rolling until we extend it, I mean, it don't automatically renew for three years, correct?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I'm, I don't know what kinda changes that may be on that, but. Yeah, she'll be here next week and we have questions for her, um, sorry, I mean, I know we've got a copy of the lease, she, uh, Luann had sent it to us. That's, that's really all I have as far as, um, what else I checked on, but.
Ballistic committees and that, as far as J C A, they, you guys pretty much recovered everything, um, with the child. Care grants and, uh, Josh Bull coming in with the industry coming in town, so I pretty much said that it was a light meeting last week with that.
I have a touch base with Josh, maybe on the. Better thing and.
So I did receive a text from Marty, um, so I'm gonna relay to the board that the saw cut will be on Friday the twenty ninth.
All we had to do was remind. Okay, any other business before the board?
During childhood, we got to meet their new director that they hired. Um, and. And I'm just going forward with kinda the childcare mini grants that are available for. Um, home-based and center-based proposals. And they're starting a new qualification of IQ four K. For child cares.
Okay, any other business before the board this morning? I have a motion in a second to adjourn, although the papers say aye.
Right.
Aye, for the time, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, have a great day.